Hi, everybody. We are going to start this meeting today at 6:05. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any adjustments. Next is approval of minutes. Looking for approval for Monday, November 14th, 2022, regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, November 17th, 2022, workshop at 4:00 p.m. Monday, November 21st, executive session, 4:30 p.m. And on Monday, the 21st as well, regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. First, seconded by John. Thank you. All in favor? Public comments? No? Okay. Communications, none. Committee reports, none. Superintendent's report. Mr. Nelson?
Okay, so if we don't mind, we'll jump right to it. We have a nice turnout today. I am very pleased and proud to have their Sanford High School marching band and members of the marching band and Director Haley Francore here. So if they don't mind, I'd like to invite them up to either the podium or up here, if they don't mind, because I'd like to hear from them about their season and their gold medal-winning band, if you mind coming up, folks.
All right. File in there. Perfect. Well, thank you very much for inviting us here. We're all very excited. Sorry, I'll try to like.
If you look on the camera, they can't see some of you at home, so we want you to that you may be happy with that, but I don't. If you're gold medal, if you're gold medal-winning, you're used to being in front of people. There we go. Excellent.
Perfect. All right. I just wanted to say a couple of words, and then I think a couple of students just wanted to speak. But just to give you a little bit of background about these guys, the marching band started working together in August to put our show on the field. About half of the marching band was brand-new to the activity, as well as some of the marching band was made up of Sanford Middle School students. So we have a very wide variety of students here. I'm sure, as many of you know, our show was titled "We Are Spartans." Each movement of our program was centered around a key characteristic of a Spartan. And then we pulled in a piece of Sanford history to relate to that as well. So for example, for discipline, we had a clip from the 1950s talking about the Sanford Goodall Mills, just because of how important the mills are to our town. Persistence, we had a voiceover of Vic Firth, who is world-known for his drumstick manufacturing and just for percussion education in general. And then for our last movement, strength, we listed a bunch of positive qualities about Spartans, and just listed as much as we could. Planning for the show started last January for myself and the staff, and to see it come to life and to see the students execute it so well, it was truly magical. I just wanted to do the show theme specifically for the new uniforms that we got and that the students were able to don this year. So that's another thank you to our town for that. It looked great, and I'm glad that they were able to really make the town proud with that. We perform in the Maine Band Directors Association circuit here in Maine. Show started in mid-September and went all the way down through October. Every Saturday during that timeframe, these students gave up basically their entire day. In the morning, they'd rehearse, then they'd load the trailer, then they'd go to the show site, usually getting back at 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. There are 10 bands in our circuit, some are even from New Hampshire, and the circuit's based off a star rating from one to five stars, and five being the highest. Our first show, we had numbers as high as four and nothing lower than a three. We get judged based on general effect, music, color guard, percussion, and drum major. This is the first gold medal that Sanford has seen since 2017, and the third one in the band's history. If you'd like to, this is my little plug here. If you'd like to see more of our music department, we have a winter concert next Thursday, December 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Sanford Performing Arts Center. You will see some of these students in it. Our winter percussion and our winter guard groups also just started. They brought home gold medals last year, and we are looking to do that again. So keep an eye out for shows starting in February. At this time, I'd like to invite our drum majors for the season up, Hannah Patterson, Charlotte Smith, and Grayson Needham.
Hi. I was very lucky to get the chance to work with the entire band. We had an amazing leadership team this year, and I am really grateful to say that I got to work with these two. And it was just really amazing to see how, even though we all come from different schools around the area, and even though the theme of Spartans might not apply to everybody, we all were able to find ways to connect to the theme of the show and connect to each other and make memories, and really put everything that we had into the show to be able to really, I don't know, connect to the history of Sanford and, you know, make everybody proud. And I think I can say for all of us, it was insane to see the community support that we got. I don't think I've, in the 10 years I've been going to these shows, I have seen a reaction like this from the community ever, and it was just something I never thought I would get to experience. So we're really grateful for all of that.
Thank you very much.
Well, don't get off. We might have a few comments and questions, I know, to run off to do that. But school committee, any thoughts, comments?
I just wanted to say that I was able to go to the show that was hosted in Sanford earlier in the season, and it was really impressive, and I think it was all work that you should all be really proud of, an important part of our community. And you did an excellent job representing the community, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm certain it was Don Jameson and his wife, Kim, who, Kim's a piano teacher, and Don's just kind of a guy that knows music better than I do. But he's the one that got me interested in the knowledge of what you're all doing. I can't play an instrument. I can barely hit a five-gallon pail with a rock. But I think it's been great. I've been a supporter of all things music in Sanford and I'll continue to be, but you've got a talent that you can take the rest of your life, so be proud of it and keep practicing. Thank you.
Amy?
I mean, amazing job. Congratulations to all of you. Thanks for putting Sanford on the map.
I don't think people realize all the work that goes into it behind the scenes, right? When you talk about coming in in August to be able to look at, and you talk about the all-day Saturdays and the rehearsals, and the organization that it takes behind the scenes with all the volunteers and the parents, it is amazing when you look at all that goes into that. And typically, for the last few years, we, Sanford as a host, we've been kind of the end, at the end of the season, right? The finals were with us, and one year, I think, we had the last one before the finals to be able to do that. And this year, we were hosting earlier in the season. And so I know as I went, and I don't, like Jonathan, I enjoy it, but I don't want to pretend that I know a lot about the intricacies of that, but I love the theme of "We Are Spartans" to come back and how that was tied in. I love the new uniforms. Those look sharp. But I also thought, from this untrained eye, that we did really well at the beginning of the season. I remember telling Haley, because at the end, when we saw the scores that came out, I was like, whoa, those scores in that early in the season was something to say. I felt like there was a nice foundation there to be able to build off of, and to be able to do that, because you're always tweaking things and changing things as you're going along to be able to do that. And the community pride that comes along with all of this, as people have already talked about. So it was one of those situations where we all know the hard work that goes into that, and thank you for doing that, because it sounds like you found it personal satisfying, but I also know as a community, we found it very satisfying and very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Haley. Talking about the concert next?
Thursday.
Thursday night.
6:00 p.m. Performing Arts Center.
6:00 p.m. Sanford Performing Arts Center, the holiday concert with that. Looking forward to that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or if you want to go home and do your homework, you're also allowed to go and do that as well, as well, but thank you. Also, later on in the agenda, we'll have our athletic director, Zach Lemlin, kind of give a fall wrap-up and a winter preview. But we also had another award this past fall season coming from our boys' soccer team. So, Mr. Lemlin, do you want to come up and kind of set that up for us? Because that's something else we want to also recognize that we're very proud of.
JP, what do you like about? I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize our boys' soccer team. They had a terrific year. We have a first-time Sanford head coach, Coach Bill Puffer, and he started, you know, late in the summer as I transitioned to becoming the athletic director. And I know Coach and I kind of learned together, and he had some very specific ways and the things that he wanted to do with the soccer program that, the minute we met and we talked about it, I was like, wow, this is, this is going to be awesome. And it wasn't necessarily, you know, the skills and drills and things like that, because once again, I'm not much of a soccer guy, I'm more of a football guy by sport, and so I trusted Coach on that. But the things that he talked about that I thought were really the most amazing things were building a team and kind of the dedication that they were going to have to each other. And I think that it speaks volumes to, you know, winning the MPA Sportsmanship Award and being recognized at the state championship game. Only one team got that for Class A, and we were, I would say, lucky enough, but I know how hard Coach worked to build a team and continue to have this program going in a positive and a right direction. So kudos to all of them. I wish I could take any credit for it, but Coach Puffer, Coach Hamilton, Tyler, and JP are here, so congratulations and thank you for your hard work, and I look forward to where that's going to go in the future.
Hey, Coach, guys, you want to come up to the block? Do you want to talk about?
Oh, my microphone's off. Sorry about that. But I also, but I also think, Mr. Lemlin, this is also voted on, my understanding is it's also voted on by not a special group, but all the other coaches? Do I have that right?
Correct. So it's voted on by other athletic directors, it's voted on by officials and other coaches. So it's a long list of things as to when our team shows up, with how they show up in attire, how they act on the field, how they act after the field. You know, there's a lot of things that go into it more than just, hey, they're really nice kids, and, you know, the coach was, you know, gave a great handshake. There's a lot of things that go into that, which go to show that it's, the program's going in the right direction from top to bottom. I'm really proud of that.
Thank you, Zach. And I am Bill Puffer. It is my first year, and I'm happy to be here tonight, because this award is really, speaks to what we have for leadership on the field, particularly amongst our two captains, and that was John Paul and Tyler LaBeuf. And it's really all about them and how they, what they stood for, and how they coalesced the team onto the field and made the impression that they did with the other coaches. So I couldn't be happier to have them as two coaches, and I think you're, you are blessed to have them as representatives of your student body and the school. You guys want to say something?
You lost the words?
Yeah, sure, that's John Paul. All right, no. No, but once again, thank you on behalf of, I know, the community and the school department. At the end of the day, it's competitive. We want to go back and do that, but it's also about how we do things. And that's, you know, I think that, as Mr. Lemlin mentioned, that's something that I think is so critical. So kudos to you and everything that you folks stand for and what you're able to do.
Thanks. Thank you, Zach.
John Paul, we can put you on the spot now. We'll circle back to student representative reports with Aiden, Emma, and John Paul. Anything you want to share with us as far as updates?
I have two notes. Just a reminder that the NHS induction is tomorrow night, and that will be starting at 7:00. And then also, another NHS announcement. NHS is sponsoring a toy drive at next Friday's basketball games. So the basketball games start at 4:00, and Sanford's actually hosting all five, so that'd be both girls' games and the three boys' games. So we're collecting toys to donate to Santa Claus, so you can just bring a toy to the basketball game and as a donation.
I just wanted to give an update on the Spree of Trees event that happened recently. It was on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this last week. And so the money was donated to the Sanford Alumni Association, and so they use this money to basically use for any projects that aren't already funded. And it was estimated that over $20,000 was raised just from this event, which is incredible. So yeah, I just want to give an update on that.
And then I'll wrap it up with some sports stuff. Last week, there was a girls' scrimmage and a boys' scrimmage. I know that the boys lost, but I'm pretty sure that the girls won. And this past Saturday, there was a wrestling tournament in Oxford Hills, and we came in third.
Thank you, everyone. And so we'll move right in, and also as updates and recognizing, if you can bring that up, Sarah or Beth, about the Sanford Spotlight. Do we have that? I think we can pivot, if it's okay, if people want to pivot. Zach, you want, Mr. Lemlin, you want to come right up? And that means Mr. Lemlin's presentation as well, correct? Okay. And that also probably means Sam's presentation as well. As people head for the exits, all right, thank you.
It was nice to have you while you were here.
We'll be here all night. Yeah, thank you. No, I think we had some adjustments. Okay, so I do have the Sanford Spotlight that I can move on without having that up on the screen. We'll just talk about some of the things that we are going to be coming in in the latest edition. With that, starting off with the high school and SRTC, as part of last Friday's Holly Days Parade, we had students at the high school and SRTC sign banners, and those banners had messages with handwritten, that were handwritten, giving thanks to local first responders. And so the banners, which were created by the city and signed by our students, were displayed on the fire trucks along the parade route with that. And I know Holly Days is a tradition, and it's a pretty big community event. As I was there, we got to see a lot of our students involved in that, whether it was our pep club and cheerleaders, the marching band also performed as well, and a lot of other community organizations that our students belong to. So that was nice for that. Going to the next page, Sanford Middle School, they have, there's a Maine Autobahn Conservation Program called Stream Explorers, and they came and visited Sanford Middle School. The weather really cooperated that day, so that's something that our students prepare for in advance. And then they're in there to also check to see if the stream near the school is polluted, moderately polluted, or not polluted at all. So we had a lot, 100 of our students basically working on that. So that was pretty neat going on at Sanford Middle School. At Carl J. Lamb, they had some of the students in Ms. Clark's room, as they were inspired by the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. They paraded their artwork through the halls and the offices for all of the school to see with that. And then they also had a big day of turtle tag, and that was the day that Team USA was playing Iran in the World Cup, to be able to come back and see that. And just a reminder that CGL is having a free movie night coming up this Thursday with that. Doors open at 5:00, 5:30 to 7:00 for that. Margaret Chase Smith School has been building what they call their "Wow" Skills, wonderful original work of art, and they spent several weeks doing that for that project, and they've demonstrated that behavior there. This edition of the Sanford Spotlight, Sanford Pride, we're focusing on our foster grandparents that are part of the Pride team there. With that, they create positive relationship with the students by working with small groups as well as one-on-one do that. So a big thank you to our foster grandparents program at Sanford Pride. Sanford Community Adult Education, their new term began today. Classes are offered in the mornings, 8:30 to 11:30, afternoons, 12 to 3:00, and in the evenings, 5:00 to 8:00, Monday, Wednesday, and also Tuesday, Thursday for that. So we have students who are working on the high set, but also there's a lot of enrichment classes as well. Also, we want to feature our Sanford High School online newspaper, The Spartan Times. There's some links there to some of their recent articles, including winter sports tip-off and a fall sports recap. We also have announcements as part of this. We've made some route changes to our buses that started today. We also have assistance for the holidays, a link there. Also, making sure people are signed up so that they can receive the ever-so-popular No School announcements. And then, as always seems that way, we're continuing to be hiring here in the Sanford School Department. Also, coming up, in addition to our high school and middle school winter concerts, the Victorian Nutcrackers coming to the Performing Arts Center this Saturday, December 10th, with two shows, one at 2:00 and one at 7:00. Margaret Chase Smith School is helping with the welfare, Animal Welfare Society with that, as they are doing that as modeling empathy. And so they're trying to meet the challenge of collecting 100 pet food items during the next week, next few weeks. And as John Paul mentioned, the National Art Society at Sanford High School has a toy drive coming up at this week's boy-girl doubleheader in basketball. And then you have a couple of the just important dates that are coming up, as well as, we always try to keep people linked in to other things going on in Sanford, so you can see there a lot of the other different links that people have. So that's fresh, fresh off the press, and so we will be releasing that in the next day or two to get that out. At this time, I'd like to introduce the public to our communications coordinator, Sam Bonzi. Sam, if you want to come up, and you can grab a seat there and turn the microphone on. I've asked Sam to come in and give us an update of how things are going with his, from his perspective and his position with that. So Sam, take it away.
Can you hear me okay? Whoops, I'm sorry about that. Thank you all for your time. So I was hired here back in late August, before the school year started, and during my onboarding, one of my tasks was to go around from school to school to gauge the strengths and weaknesses for communication at each location. And I also talked to members of the community as well, whether that was Zach Lemlin, or Sarah, or Brett Williams, or Jordan Wilson with the city, just to kind of get a gauge of what the communication is like in Sanford. In base, what I kind of found was that there was, there was a little bit of a lack of clarity and issue with just, with information getting to the right people with the right information that was happening. And so what I've been drafting is this school communications plan, assignment and editorial board, and also just future plans that I would like to implement going forward. So you see up here, I'm not going to get into like the exact minutia for, because that'll take up everybody's, that'll take too much time with this. But basically, with this communications plan, it focuses on communication within the school district, parents in the community, and with local media. And really, what I want to try to focus on is to clarify that flow between myself and also administrators at other schools as well, and to provide training to administrators with effective communication. That training would be more with Thrill Share, with APTG, the app that we've been using to kind of get people squared away with on that front. To create a system to encourage overall flow of information, to publish and distribute information such as the newsletter, and with all the newsletters at the other schools as well. To, you know, to communicate with civic and community groups, be visible in the community, and attend meetings like this. And also, we should have fun and huddle these sets of staff for this as well. I can do karaoke if you guys want to. Yeah. So yeah, there are just like two target audiences that we're trying to look for here. One is internal, that would be students and staff, and then the other is external, that would be obviously parents' guardians, parent organizations, also prospective students' families and employees, and obviously electronic media and print media, because like we said, we want to, you know, as much as like people come here for other things, like we want to have media come here for what, for when things are happening, that's positive happening in the community. Thank you, Sarah. And these strategies, they're not too complex. We want to keep things as simple as possible. We want to, ideally, I would like to have this communication to be like conversational, not like that we're just like robust behind the screen, like saying like, this, this is, this is happening right now. Use just clear, concise, and non-educational style of, for all general publications. Also, just be in front of what's happening, communicating early and often. Prepare info sheets when appropriate, follow up with memos or communications. Also, communicate face-to-face. I just feel there's a lot of honesty in communicating face-to-face. It's, you know, the more difficult the situation, the more important it is to do that. And also to encourage staff to relay messages through personal interactions when appropriate. Keep it brief and to the point. We don't want to be long-winded, just say what needs to be said. Train staff, that goes back to Thrill Share and APTG, but we can also train staff into maybe, going back to that, you know, making it more conversational in that regard. And also, we can study the media, study the latest trends as to what's happening, whether that's with how other school districts are using their social media, and trying to see what they have done well, and also see what they're like, maybe listening to podcasts as to what they've seen that doesn't work well as well. Yeah, that's, and then as far as communications methods, we have in-person, that would be, you know, parent-teacher conferences, school committee meetings, and advisory councils. As far as written, we have our classroom newsletters, and of course, we have the district newsletter as well. And then with electronic, we would have, we would make sure that all board meeting minutes would be posted in a timely manner on the school website. Department and school information would be posted on the district and school websites as well. Like I mentioned before, we have Thrill Share and APTG, and then that links to all of our social media accounts. That's Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Infinite Campus. We also have a community calendar and text reminders and emails and everything. And as far as communications goals, we really just want to be able to, you know, develop a strong relationship with everybody in the community. And just, I feel like if I were to have a kid here, you know, we're trying to think of like what school you would want to go to, I'd want to know what, that this would be a place where my school would want to go to by having that consistent communication. And also, part of that is also going to be dealing with crisis communication and management. We want to provide timely information in the event of a crisis or emergency, and using the necessary tools such as social media, emails, phone calls, stuff like that. And as far as the, kind of like the inflammation plan, this would be like a communications matrix, and I did note that this is kind of just like a guide. There would be different circumstances that we might have to do something else. But with general information, we would want to use the website, email, text, and social media. Don't really need a phone call for that. But with pretty much everything else, with emergencies, early dismissal, delayed opening, and school closures, we would ideally want to have everything from website, email, text messages, social media, and the phone call as well. And so this, this is something that I've used in prior experience. This is what I would call an editorial board or like an assignment board. So basically, it's basically just like a schedule of events or like edit things that you would put in that you, that we would want to have highlighted and covered, basically. So that would just be at all seven schools or anything else that would be happening, Monday through Friday. And I would also encourage all staff to reach out to me if they have events that they would like to be highlighted. I can share this form. So if people would want to just go in themselves, they could put events into that as well. So if people would want to just go in themselves, they could put events into that as well. And as far as future plans, I think it would be important to offer training sessions for administrative with thrill share and other, and other things as well. We could dive into more of our resources. We have the Spartan times, the newspaper, WSSR, obviously. And with City Hall, you know, with working with Jordan Wilson with the city's communications coordinator and with Brett Williams with the Performing Arts Center. And lastly, I think. You know, let's get creative with it. I mean, I think that's social media, it's ever changing. There are things that I think that we can really tap into, whether it's. Moving to other platforms such as, you know. Tik Tok or even podcast stuff like that. We can get really creative with this and I think that's something that the community would respond to.
Sam, if you had to boil it down, what would be some of the biggest priorities you're trying to make sure that we can get out of? If you had to boil that down.
The biggest priorities, just to make sure that the community is in the know of everything that's going on and making sure that.
The communication is timely, right? That that's right now, we're trying to do our best to make sure that striking that balance between. Informing people, letting them know what's going on without overdoing it. But also to the point where telling our story, I think that that's the thing that we want to always come at. Is that there's a lot of pretty neat and exciting things going on. And I think if we can be able to help tell that story, that's going to be something that I think is going to really connect and resonate. Not only with our direct stakeholders, but I also think as we're trying to do is to also get that out beyond to the greater community. To also do that. I know that as you look at the Sanford spotlight, things we've been doing. As I listen from people in our civic groups and doing that, they may not have people in the schools anymore. But boy, do they still want to be what's going on and they're really interested in that. So I think that's a big focus of what we're trying to do.
I'm thrilled. I mean, I'm a newspaper guy, right? But I'm, you know, that's going by the way of the dinosaur. So. To create a communication link between for all citizens of the community and surrounding communities. I hope you have the ability to, not you personally, I hope the community. Allows you to work with Jordan at the city and with Sarah SSR TV. I think that's just an underutilized asset. I mean, there's, it's a mountain to climb, but everything is there for you and I think the citizens want it. The number of topics you could talk about or inform the community about is, I mean, it's, it's big. How you would prioritize that on a weekly basis, monthly, quarterly, annually. I can't even imagine. It's Herculean. But I like the fact that you want to make it creative because. There's a lot of fun to be had if you're in that world, which you are. I'm looking forward to seeing it. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for your work. I too agree that. I love to hear the creativity piece. I think that recognizing. The way in which people communicate is really important. You know, and recognizing those different platforms is incredibly important. I loved the board that you created and I will be interested to follow that process to see how that works. For all of the various schools. I know last year we had a community publication. That weekly would put out. Like the game schedule of the week for all of the games. And that was super helpful for me. As someone who, you know, didn't have a child participating, but as a community member wanted to support. And so that board kind of made me think of. That weekly bulletin that you would get on Monday and I was like, oh, I'd like to remember Haley's band concert. But am I going to remember it, you know, so. I'm really looking forward to see how the work propels. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing so far. I, I, I think one, another stakeholder, if you may, would be the Sanford News with Zendel because I know she does some excellent work. And a lot of times does relay a lot of what we talk about at the school committee member meetings. And it's just another avenue of getting the information out. I hope that, you know, I know. I'm not trying to with the A team meetings or such that, you know, when you have all the administrators together, that maybe would be. An idea of like when you could kind of teach the thrill share and such because, you know, how I receive communication could be different from. Everybody else in the room, but I definitely love the pull out, the push out texts as quick reminders. I know. You know, the middle school had put some work in the school counselors to do a vaping information. I don't think anybody came. So that just says kind of like that newsletter is maybe not reaching everybody that it should and maybe we could be. Have ways of improvement. So I'm just grateful that you're part of the Sanford team now and gonna help us. Let everybody know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll definitely do a better job of finding out more of the vaping session and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Well, I didn't know about it either. So you know what I mean? It's, it's not on you. It's on all of us.
I understand, yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm very, very excited that we had a chance to see this. We needed you. You're here and I love your energy. I love everything you say about creativity and just everything. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this develops and where you're at, where we all are at at the end of the school year coming up. Thank you.
Before Sam leaves, as stakeholders here, because as parents or grandparents, are there. Any other feedback or suggestions or recommendations for Sam to be able to. Continue on that might not be encompasses plan or some other things to be able to be on the lookout for or consider?
I would consider, you know, again, it's all how you communicate, but maybe a general email box. That people could send in what's going on in the community to you because I feel like it would make your job easier.
Uh, yeah, for sure.
Sure. I do feel going back and I, I know that I bring this up at nauseam, so I apologize to bring it up again. I was a lover of the weekly. Superintendent's reports that came out on Sundays, which was just basically communication that was going on. In the upcoming week about upcoming events, what was going on really well in all the schools and throughout the community and. We went away with that because of the new website and all the bells and whistles that it has. I'm grateful that you're gonna be able to teach us to use all the bells and whistles and I'm sure they just haven't been touched upon, but I do think. I know that. Liz Dudgeon, you know, when I used to put on a lot of events, I would email her and then she would add it to it. So I think. It's a great opportunity with your email that was just on the presentation that people can say. Oh, you know, McPride's PTA is doing event for this and that email Sam and he'll help. You know, spread the word. So I think if people, the more people know that they can do that. They will, it'll start coming.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, for sure.
I can stay definitely for the student avenue. Instagram is a very strong connection point. A lot of people check that daily and. Good post, grab attention.
For sure. And I think like the Spartan times, the newspaper, they, they do an excellent job and that's something that I want to have more communication with Kelly kind of going forward to. Make sure we're all on the same page with that. So.
Yeah, it's finding that balance where some people like to have all the information in one place. Other people like it to be in pieces. Coming out, but just having that consistent presence to be able to keep people notified with that, I think is, is critical.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to director's reports.
Okay, Mr. Lemlin, come on up. Sam's a coordinator, so he got to go under my report. As a director, you get to go under your own report. And so that's why you had to wait a little longer.
I appreciate that. Thank you guys for, for taking the time to invite me back. It's, it's been great. I know that I'm here to kind of give a fall wrap up. It was an awesome fall. I know that. Okay, no, that's okay. Preoccupied. That's okay. Couldn't do any of the stuff with those here anyways. So wanted to give some recognition to, to our fall teams. Here's a kind of a rundown of our, our individual teams. Our cross country team had individuals qualify for the regional. Race, which was, was awesome. We did not qualify as a team, but individuals did. I know that the numbers are starting to build back up for that. I'm really excited about. The direction that the cross country team is going to be going in. Our football team advanced to the semifinals. Fell to Thornton Academy, who ended up playing the state championship. It was a great game in that. Monsoon style rain a couple of weeks back. Our field hockey team made it to the quarterfinals and, and lost to Gorham. Our boys soccer, as we had recognized tonight, were, you know, the MPA sportsmanship winner. So I think it was, it was a great year for our boys soccer team. Our girls soccer team hosted a home quarterfinal playoff game for the first time at, at least in my eleven years. Being involved with Sanford and Sanford Athletics. So that was a huge step in the right direction. And then volleyball advanced to the regional final and they lost to an absolute juggernaut of Bitterford. It was tremendous to, to make it to that game and, and see how well our girls played against, you know, a team that's. Been playing volleyball since I was back in high school in two thousand and seven. So they've been, they've been playing volleyball for a long time. We're, you know, our fifth year and we're in the regional final. So I'm really, really proud of that and as. As important as it was for our fall teams to have some success, we had probably one of the coolest things that I can kind of tote is, is our. We had forty five students who were on the all academic team. That was, that was really cool and headlined by sixteen girls from the girls soccer team. So in order to get on that, you have to have a ninety two and a half or a ninety three unwated GPA. So that's, that's pretty impressive. I don't know that I would have been there in high school, but it was great to. To have so many kids there. We had fifteen all conference athletes. Across all the sports and then we had six all state athletes and a couple of more kind of coming in as the press herald is starting to. To unroll their stuff. And I know that we had another student who was just recognized at the. Boys all star soccer game as, as the MVP. So I'm trying to get a little bit more information from him and his parents to, to be able to recognize him here in, in the next coming weeks on social media. As we start our, our winter season, I'll start with the middle school because they started, you know, forever ago, it seems now. They, they started on November seventh. We are going to offer, you know, three teams right now and then in the second season that they'll have wrestling. But we have two teams for basketball. You have boys basketball with twenty seven athletes for a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team. We have two cheering teams with the seventh and eighth grade team with, with twenty six athletes there. Our girls basketball team with two teams again. With twenty one athletes and like I'd said, wrestling will start in late January, early February. We're in the process of putting. That schedule together and, and I know the kids are obviously pretty excited about having a second winter season as they're not entirely sure whether they want to play basketball or they want to wrestle. So they'll have both opportunities at, at the middle school. The high school, we started winter sports on November twenty first. Our boys basketball team, we have three teams. We have a varsity team, a JV team and a freshman team or a first team. We have twenty seven athletes on that team. Our cheer numbers are a little bit smaller this year, but I think things are doing really well there. We have fourteen athletes and, and a new addition to the team that I'm excited to see on Friday night. Our girls basketball team, we have, we have twenty three students there with, on two teams for a varsity and a JV team there. We have one athlete playing ice hockey this year with Marshwood, Noble, Trape. Competing down there. Sorry, I was losing my train of thought, trying to count as to who's in that co-op. Our indoor track, this is the first time, you know, I'd say we've ever had indoor track, but I, I'm not sure if I can go that far back in history. I know in recent memory, this is the first time we've had our own indoor track team. So we have seventeen athletes competing in the boys and girls. It's super exciting. We're going to have all of our meets at USM. We're going to compete not as a co-op, as our own individual team. And I really look forward to, to seeing that team grow. I know. Traditionally Sanford has always had strong outdoor track teams. So I don't think it'll be long before those numbers are, are continuing to grow and, and we're. Hopefully one of those dominant teams in, in the SMA. Our swim team, we've, we've co-opted with Mass of Esic. So we have eleven swimmers right now and, and hoping through the co-op, we're going to be able to get the swim program back in, in, in the right direction. You know, I have. A great swim coach from Mass of Esic, Kerry Chamberlain, who's doing an awesome job, who is leading that in the right direction and knows more about swim than, than anyone else that we had. Kind of be involved. So it's, it's great to, to see where that's going to go. Unified, probably my favorite winter sport. I don't know if I should say that out loud, but unified is pretty amazing. So that starts on January second with the first game on the twenty. Twenty third of January. And then last but not least, we have wrestling and we have thirty five. Athletes, boys and girls on that team. I know as Aiden had said earlier, they went to the Viking duels this weekend and took third and. It was funny as I went into the room and I congratulated all, all them on their third place finish and, and they. Wanted to boo me out of the room because they, they thought they'd left a little bit on the table and which is exciting that. They're setting the bar pretty high. So I'm, I'm really excited to, to see what's going on there. I, I know their home opener is December twenty first. So there should be a big crowd for that, I hope. And I know, fingers crossed, if everything comes in the mail, we'll hopefully be able, be able to have a state championship banner. To show off on that night as well. I listed that we'll have over fifty home events this winter happening at the high school and that doesn't include any of the track meets or the. Ice hockey games or, or, you know, any of that stuff that's, that's not on campus. So. It'll be busy and I know I'd shared in the fall, if you get something, you know, you're bored some night, there's probably something going on down at Sanford High School. And then the middle school will play all their games at the middle school gym. The cheerleaders will be on the sidelines for, for most of the games there and then. The wrestling season will start in, in February and they'll have all their wrestling meets in the gymnasium as well. As we move on to, to upcoming events, I know I had kind of talked about a little and I know JP had kind of stolen my thunder a little bit earlier again. But we are hosting, you know, the SMA student athlete summit tomorrow at Sanford High School. So. The seventeen SMA schools will be in attendance tomorrow. It's really cool that, you know, they all wanted to come to Sanford as, as the new guy, I kind of sat back and said, I don't really know what's going on. And they said, well. You have such a beautiful facility that, that we're coming to your place. And I said, all right, well, we'll figure it out. So there's going to be almost two hundred kids from, from local high schools in tomorrow and we've got guest speakers coming in from Positive Coaching Alliance. Who are going to talk about sportsmanship and, and the idea of honoring the game. You know, there's been a trend throughout social media and unfortunately of parents and. You know, spectators not always being respectful towards officials and, and the athletes playing. So we're going to hopefully be able to put a positive spin on. On what game should look like and, and we have ten really great representatives coming from Sanford tomorrow and I look forward to, to where that's going to go. On twelve nine, I know JP had mentioned about the toy drive, but we are going to have five basketball games at night. I'm, I'm sure my wife will be a little. Wondering why I decided to do that when I come home and I'm tired, but excited to have Scarborough come down for all five games. We have the, the annual SWAT on the, the first weekend of January. We have our unified home opener against Mass of Esic on Monday, the twenty third. The very next day, we're going to host the eighth grade, boys and girls. Basketball games. That's their season finale against Noble at, at the high school, trying to, to start something cool where. You know, some of those middle school teams can finish their, their regular season games at the high school to get them ready for what will look like when they come to the high school. We're hosting the SMA cheer competition and then the following weekend, we have the MPA regional cheer competition at Sanford. Got pretty lucky again. Mr. Peterman's a, a pretty big supporter of the cheer since he's on that committee, but. He said, hey, guess what? First year, we're not going to have just one, we're going to have two. So those will be two pretty fun weekends back to back. And then lastly, I'm, I'm hoping for a really great weekend as everyone else is heading off to. February vacation that we're going to be hosting the state championship for wrestling and it'd be great to, to win a state championship in our own building. That weekend as we head off onto, onto vacation. As we go to the next page and, and I know Amy was trying to take a, take a picture of it. And I know it talks a little bit about, about social media down at the bottom and I, I had kind of talked about this in the, in the fall, but we're continuing to use huddle and huddle focus and, and thank you to Sarah for. WSSR TV because she's able to stream all these things for us and. It's great to have our freshman boys or our JV girls or our varsity boys, any of those events. Whether it's going to be our estimate cheer competition, all those things are going to be online and streamed. It makes it really great for. For families to, to be able to watch. I can't tell you all the people I, I see around town that say their uncle from Virginia was watching the game and. You know, why did this happen? And I was like, that's, you know, it's impressive outreach and it's great to have that, you know, all free of charge. Continue to use the R school app. That's on the left and the right hand side. Anyone can follow any team that they would like. You don't have to sign up. You don't have to make accounts. You don't have to do any of those things. You can follow the team that's specific to you. And, and I know when I had my parent meeting not too long ago. I talked about, hey, it's important if, if you don't necessarily know where you're going and you've got a freshman or, or someone who's the first time they're playing. If you download this app, you can click on the schedule and it'll give you directions to the school, to the gym, to, to whatever facility you're going to be in that, that really helps, you know, go a long way instead of. You know, try to GPS it or come up with whatever off the top of your head. You think you know how to get there from twenty five years ago. And, and like we had talked about. You know, social media is a, a pretty big piece and I know JP touched on Instagram being something that, that people are always. Kind of in tune with and we've started using Instagram this year and I wasn't sure how it was going to go, but, but JP is right. A lot of kids are, are into Instagram and, and we had. I think gained over five hundred and thirty followers, which I think is, you know, a ton for me, probably not for other people. which I think is, you know, a ton for me, probably not for other people, but people are interacting with that account. They're, they're seeing what's going on and it, they're able to follow, you know, athletes of the week. We were doing the hard hat winners for football and we're posting game updates, you know, post-games, you know, letting people know what time the games are happening. It was really great as, as the fall sports were, were kind of kicking off and it seemed like we were getting rain and thunderstorms every other day. And it was great to be able to, to post some of that information and, and for the kids. So I think that adults are, are kind of getting there and I think there's other ways that we can continue to share that information as well. Continuing on with, with the leadership council is something that I'm going to be starting here next week. We had weekly meetings. I know JP was there this fall and, and I, I think I've, I've said to those guys, it's selfishly more for me than it is for them at times because it's great to be able to, to be with the leaders and the captains from the fall teams. And I'm going to start again with the winter because there's times where you miss the classroom and you have that, you know, interaction with the kids to, to be able to talk about what's going on. So, so we were meeting every Wednesday in the fall and we discussed leadership, team goals, culture, climate, all the things that are really important to, to know kind of in what direction we want to, want to take the, the athletic department. So the, the kids this fall were awesome. Any of the kids that had shown up that had, had attended 70% or more of the meetings, got themselves a T-shirt. You know, probably going to have to try to come up with something different if there's some, some athletes this winter who are going to be repeat, you know, they're probably not going to need another T-shirt. So we'll come up with something, something else, but it's an opportunity for them to hopefully share, you know, their thoughts and opinions that they might not necessarily pop in, you know, to my office to say so. So those are, those are some of the things there for the slides. Some other things that I just wanted to share were, you know, thank you to all the parents for, for the support this fall. I, I totally get it as to kids are everywhere. You have kids at, you know, three or four different schools and you would find the time somehow, some way to, to get them from one place to another and to pick them up. And a coach isn't waiting till nine o'clock at night to, you know, to bring a kid home because someone forgot. All the fall game help and, and the custodians were, were absolutely amazing. I don't know if you could show up to any of our sites and, and not, and notice that there was an event the night before. Everything was always clean. Everything was always put away. People were, were treated with respect. It was, it was really cool to, to get some of those notes in the mail. Received a, a note from a woman in Bangor who had come down and, and attended the football game against, against Sanford and, and she was glowing about the, the facilities and, you know, said that I did such a job, you know, great job designing them. And I obviously can't take any credit for anything, but I, I certainly patted myself on the back and said, you know, you did a great job with that. So that's a, that's a credit to, to all of you guys.
Take the credit when you can, Mr. Lemlin. Take the credit when you can.
You know, I want to, I want to give a huge thank you to the, to the Red and White Foundation. They're doing an, an awesome job. They said they had a, an amazing fall with the boosters and the stands always being full. And, you know, hopefully they're raising some funds that we can then turn around and, and use for, for athletics, for the things that, that the kids need and want, not for necessarily things for me. We had our first fall awards night with some normalcy. It was really cool to, to be able to get back and, and recognize kids and parents and families and all be in the same room together and not be six feet apart and every other seat and having masks on. It was, it was cool to, to be able to do that. I think there was a collective breath of fresh air with, with that opportunity. And then the environment that we had all fall, you know, there was some really awesome Friday night experiences with football with some huge crowds from homecoming to, you know, the Mass of Esic night with, with Chase Fromweller. That was absolutely incredible to, you know, even the nights where it was a little bit calmer and, and you could hear, you know, our gold medal band. Where on other nights, you might not necessarily get a chance to hear that because there was pushing 2,500 people plus in, in the stadium and, and probably even more. So it was, it was an awesome fall and I look forward to a great winter. And, you know, this Friday night, it gets all kicked off. So I'd love to see you guys if, if you ever have, well, we'll see some of you guys there. So, awesome.
I would just say one thing that I learned at the winter sports meeting the other night from the Red and White president was that if you don't have time to volunteer, they do take donations as well. So you can always, you know, chips, drinks, whatever that they can sell, they're willing to take, which would help my guilt of not being able to help them.
Yeah, no, that was one of the cool things that, that I'm glad that Mr. Bolduc came and, and shared that night at the, the parent night because like a lot of people, a lot of people are busy, but not busy enough sometimes to make a crock pot of mac and cheese and hot dogs or, and to, to donate it on any of our larger events with the SWAT or the cheering tournaments or some of that stuff that's coming in because they can turn around and, and they can sell that. I can tell you at the wrestling meet and Aiden will probably tell you that mac and cheese and hot dogs will, will get gobbled up. I, I think that they'll go through 40-plus boxes of mac and cheese. So if anyone wants to donate, you know, a crock pot that doesn't take a crazy amount of time, the, the Red and White Foundation is always very, very appreciative of it. And while I struggle to boil water sometimes, I can still make the mac and cheese on, on that weekend.
I just wanted to give kudos to the, you know, coming out of COVID, the fall football games. It just felt really great to be back in that community atmosphere. Also, I really liked the work that you're doing with the leadership council. And I love new traditions such as the eighth grade teams closing out their season at the high school. A suggestion I would have would be for the athletic department to potentially counsel with their coaches on individual team fundraisers or plans and guidelines, developing an operating budget for, for each coach who is rolling out a fundraiser so that we're identifying before rolling out the fundraiser where the money is being allocated. So we're kind of remembering what are we fundraising for? And I'm not really sure right now if those guidelines are in place.
Yeah, no, so that, that is one of those things that we, we talk about in the coaches' meetings before the start of the season because as a longtime football coach, it was always one of those frustrations as you're getting the kids to try to sell and the kids are like, well, you know, I'm all fundraising for is the $25 T-shirt at the end. And it's like, no. So, you know, you could boil it back down and say, these are the things that we need to do. You know, and specifically talking about the times that I was a football coach, we would think about, yeah, it was T-shirts, but there was also pre-game meals and there was post-game meals and there was awards at the end. Or it was the, the banquets that we would go to that the football team would, you know, would cover. And, and so it was always important to remind those coaches of, you need to have a plan for, for what you're doing. You're not just trying to raise, you know, a whole bunch of money if, if, you know, the kids need to know what that goal is. But that is good to, to remember that.
And, and community, I think. You know, making sure that the community has a good idea of what those fundraisings dollars are being spent for. Because as a community member, especially at, at the rollout of new seasons, every single team is fundraising, you know? And every team has a different fiscal need. You know, your golf team has a different need than your football team, but there's not a lot of education around what and how and when and where needs are being met. They're just blanket fundraisers. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if we've met, but if not, hi. Great information, but more importantly, your, your passion and genuine presentation was really clear to me. So it was a great first impression. I was really impressed with your attendance, so thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, one thing, you mentioned it that I know I'm really proud of. You talked about the fan from Bangor who raved about the facilities. This fall, you hosted the soccer regional championships for Southern Maine and you highlighted, you know, tomorrow, when we've got each school in our conference sending 10 student athletes here to that summit. We've done, we did that a few years ago and there's a reason they're coming back because we do it the right way. And then you're talking about hosting the state wrestling tournament and the state, and the regional cheering championships and those boy-girl double headers. Those are those things that, there's a lot of work there, but there's a lot of benefit that also comes back to promote our athletic program, but it also promotes Sanford and also comes back into people to do that. And so I know that there's a lot of work that goes into that. It sounds, it's nice to put up on the screen, but I want to thank you for taking those on to be able to do that because that too is a, a big benefit to, to our school department, our community.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to add to that and say thank you to you and to Valerie and to your babies because your job takes up a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of everything. So, but the school community is very happy to have you, the community in general is. And so thank you for everything you're doing. Much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, guys, have a great night. Thank you.
Get out while you can.
Get home for bedtime.
Go, go, go. Steve, you're on.
Good evening. At our last school committee meeting, I gave you an update on pre-K. I let you know they were going to have some observations by the Department of Ed. And so last week, the Department of Ed did do observations in all of our pre-K classrooms. We had Sukulant, who's a teacher from Southern Maine. She has a lot of experience with pre-K and early childhood education. And we had Marcy Whitcomb, who comes from up north, who has a lot of experience with Head Start. And so they came and conducted observations in all of our programs. And they also met with the administrative team, the elementary administrative team after school one day last week. During our meeting with Marcy, we talked about what's going well, what are we working through and really what are some next steps with that? First of all, what's going well is really our schools have welcomed and embraced our pre-K programs. We're at full enrollment. The classrooms have the furniture and supplies that they need for the most part for student success and teacher success. One area in terms of what we're working on in terms of supplies now is getting some technology into those classrooms. And when we look at technology, not looking at iPads or computers for our pre-K kiddos, but really looking at what are some whole classroom technology things that teachers could use. For instance, we've just purchased an Osmo where for the classrooms, and the next thing they've asked for is electronic microscopes. So when they go outside and they, you know, they find a bug, they can bring it in, they can look at it underneath the microscope and things like that. So, but for the most part, we have what we need. We've worked out a lot of the logistical things, transportation, breakfast, lunch, you know, how are they going to enter the building, how are they going to leave the building, what are we going to do if they have a toileting accident, how are they going to do naps? So a lot of those logistical things we've worked through. There's some, still some challenges, but those are going well. We have a curriculum in place with an assessment system that we're working through the first year of implementation. We've completed our first round of parent conferences and this week they are working on their final fall written progress report to go home with family. So there's a lot to go well, a lot that staff should be proud of. What are we working through? As with all of our classrooms, pre-K is no different. We are working through some academic challenges and some behavioral challenges with some of our four-year-olds and new five-year-olds. Teachers are working through making those referrals to Child Development Services, which is a special education provider for special education services. And really we talked a lot about it in our meeting about those behavioral supports that some of our four-year-olds are needing. And what resources are we currently using to support those kiddos? We've talked about expanding the role of our behavior coaches to have them go in and support us using our school counselors and also some outside supports that the DOE, that they can provide for us as well as we work to support those kiddos. So that's sort of what we're working through. Next steps, and this is really where I think was really helpful to meet with the DOE team, you know, what things should we be thinking about as we move forward? They really pushed us to think about parent involvement, family involvement, how are we getting families into our classrooms? Talked about expanding, now's the time to start thinking about expanding the role of our art, music and PE teachers. How are we going to provide some professional development for those staff and working with four-year-olds as we look to expand that programming for those kiddos? And looking at transition planning, how are we going to transition our pre-K kiddos into kindergarten for next year? So really some big things to start thinking about as we roll into the new year for our advisory team that we'll be meeting next week and starting to plan some of those things Some good news, really good news that we're really excited about is that our pre-K kiddos will not need to be re-screened for kindergarten. So that is good news that we will be sharing with our kindergarten staff. So that's going to impact the end of the year for our kindergarten students. So we'll work through that and figure out what that means with that. So overall, we're going to get a written report. Each teacher will get written feedback from the department that is between the teacher and the consultant that came. And then they will provide a final report to Mr. Nelson and the central office team and the administrators that will look at our programs holistically that I'm envisioning will incorporate some of these things that we talked about. But overall, I think, I think it was a positive visit. It is pretty intense for our pre-K teachers. It's not a sit here for 15 and 20 minutes. There's three short observations or 20 to 30 minutes long. They step out, they take some notes, they go back and observe again, they step out and so they do that two or three times. So it's a pretty intense, but I think hopefully they'll find it positive and they will be coming back a couple more times as we end the year. So that's just an update tonight on pre-K. And the other piece I mentioned, it's not on the agenda, but just in terms of the transportation update, that is not due to having new drivers. I know a couple of families got excited when they saw new routes coming through. That was just looking at efficiencies and it rose at the, led me, had an opportunity to look at the routes and really look at efficiencies. So that's what that was about to improve our timing as we're always looking to do. And that's all I have this evening until policies.
Thank you. John?
Steve, I think when we started this, we talked about enrollment of like 96 students. Is that right? Is, is there a waitlist and what, what's expected next year for numbers?
So the enrollment target was 96. October 1st enrollment, that cutoff, I believe we're at 95. Right now, we're currently at 96 and we have two or three families that are on a waitlist. As we look forward to next year, we are looking to still have that 96 cap based on what our current need in the community looks like. The only one difference from next year that we'll talk more about at budget time is looking at Head Start, looking at that program at a Head Start and looking at, do we want to bring that program into our existing elementary schools with that? So they all be under our umbrella. But in terms of enrollment for next year, we're looking through that 96 target.
Anyone else? Matt, do you have anything? Thank you so much, Steve. Okay, we're moving on. No new business, no old business. We're going to hear from, excuse me, Mr. Nelson, resignations, retirements, staff appointments, staff transfers and staff nominations.
All right, I'll announce the following resignations. Jasmine Dort, seventh grade math teacher at the middle school. Jennifer Young, ed tech three at the middle school. Margaret Cannon, kitchen personnel at the high school. Amy Costa, a special education teacher at MCS. Megan Ward, a teacher at the bridge program. And Sarah Fuentes, ed tech one at Sanford Middle School. I want to thank all of those people and wish them best of luck. Staff transfers, a couple of those to announce. Becky McCann from the Math Intervist, ed tech three at the middle school. She'll be moving into that seventh grade math teacher, long-term sub position that was created with that earlier resignation. And then also transferring Katrina Hartford from Sanford Middle School over to the high school as a second shift custodian. And there are no nominations this evening.
Okay, moving on to policies and procedures.
Sorry, I meant staff appointments. I missed those. With that, I'll backtrack to item M. Kitchen Personnel Renee Bernier added at the middle school. And then for the athletic program is Athletic Director Lemlin talked about the indoor track program. We've got Lindsay Strout as an assistant indoor track coach as an appointment. Sorry.
Okay, now policies and procedures.
I have tonight, a second reading of two policies and one procedure. This will be the last policies of 2022 as we have a new school committee coming on in January. So the first one is policy DJH, purchasing and contracting procurement staff code of conduct. This policy is intended to assist school units in complying with the requirements of the Uniform Grant Guidance. It set a rules that requires local school administrative units who receive federal awards units who receive federal awards to have in-place specific written procurement and conflict of interest policies and procedures, which should apply to any solicitation or contract for goods or services that uses federal funds. The second procedure is procedure DJE-R, purchasing and contracting procurement staff code of conduct. This procedure ensures compliance with the procurement and purchase of property, goods, and services using any federal award in whole or in part, that is subject to the Uniform Federal Grant Guidance. And the last one is policy JLCD, which is Administration of Medication to Students. And this added the rules for the use of naloxone, efrenefrin auto-injectors, and use of sunscreen in schools. And I recommend approval of the two policies and the one procedure.
And just to remind everyone, these are the second readings. We didn't do those at our last meeting, because there'd only been one week between meetings back in November. But also, the first two, DGH, and the procedure DJE-R, those were a result of the audit for our food service program. That as a result of that, we needed to make sure that those were updated. So, we've done that. And then, the third one is the JLCD, which is, Steve has been working with our school nurses on, also with the Guidance of Maine School Management Association with that.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Amy. Seconded by Jen. All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, moving on. There's no items for future agenda. Calendar announcements, Mr. Nelson?
Sure. So, our next school committee meeting will be on Monday, December nineteenth. That'll be a meeting when we say goodbye to John and Jonathan, to recognize their service. There'll also be a workshop prior to that meeting on the nineteenth, for the superintendent evaluation, the annual evaluation. And then, our school committee meetings in January will be on January ninth, Monday, and then, Monday, January twenty-third. And we will have a workshop before the January ninth meeting, ahead of time. That's usually where we have the audit information that will be shared at that first meeting in January. And then also, there'll also be a election of a chair and vice chair, as well as committee assignments at that first meeting in January. And just wanted to let people know, with our two school committee members, Melissa Simpson and Kelly Termath, I do have meetings set up with them coming up, where to help welcome them to the school committee, and kind of do an orientation to help get them welcomed and set up for success.
Thank you very much.
And just to remind, those holiday concerts on the fifteenth and the sixteenth. Middle school will be, what's that? Fourteen-fifteen, sorry. I should have wrote that down. Fourteen is on Wednesday for the middle school, and Thursday, the sixteenth, is the middle school with those holiday concerts.
Jen?
December can get really busy. And so, I just didn't want to lose sight. I wanted to just give a shout out to Chief Anderson, Deputy Chief Small, and our SRO, Joe Jordan at SMS today. I spoke with Officer Jordan later in the day, and he just couldn't say enough about how amazing it was to hear over his radio all day, "Mission accomplished, box delivered." Our police department was out in force today and delivered sixty boxes to local families and Sanford students. And I just have no words, because it was just so appreciated. And so, I just wanted to be on record, not that they need that public recognition, but I think it's important, as, you know, a government entity, when we can collaborate with other government entities, it really strengthens our community, and puts forth that unified front. So, big shout out to Chief Anderson, Deputy Chief Small, and SRO Joe Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. That's important. Amy, did you have anything?
Well, just congratulations on the Box of Joy. And it's a big feat. And thank you for your organization in doing it.
Okay. Without any further ado, recommendation to adjourn this meeting at seven nineteen. Seconded, firsted by John, seconded by Jen. All in favor?
All in favor.